Okay, we are ready to get started. Today is Monday, September 23rd, 2024, and we are honored to have Coquenino County in the House today for a joint city council-county work session. I am calling the meeting to order. Can we have roll call? Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eslin? Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Chairwoman Begay?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Horseman?
Here.
Supervisor Fowler?
Hello, Lena. I'm here.
Supervisor Hess? Supervisor Vasquez? And Vice Mayor is going to be a little late hopping on. All right. Let me get to next. Next on our agenda is our pledge, mission, statement, and land acknowledgement. Councilmember McCarthy, would you lead us in the pledge?
I would. Would you please stand if you're able?
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up, we have open call to the public. This is for any item that's not on the agenda. You have three minutes, and there's a clock here. And council will not answer questions or respond to you, but we may ask staff to follow up with you. First up, we have Heidi Hansen.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Madam Supervisor, councilmembers, and Board of Supervisors. I'm Heidi Hansen, your Economic Vitality Director for the City of Flagstaff. I've been working on Prop 487 with Rebecca Sayers, our Prose Director, and several other city staff for about a year and a half now, getting ready for a renewal. Proposition 487 is a continuation of the city lodging, restaurant, transaction, privileged tax, which is also known as the bedboard and beverage tax. This proposition does not ask for an increase in the tax just to renew it. This tax has been in place since 1988 and has been renewed three other times. If renewed, it would continue through June 2043, and I'm happy to say I'll be retired the next time it comes up for renewal. Some background. The BBB is a 2% tax on hotels, motels, campgrounds, short-term rentals, bars, and restaurants. The programs that receive this funding are Parks and Recreation, Tourism, and Visitor Services, Beautification, Arts and Sciences, and Economic Development. Every penny of this $13 million that it's currently at gets put back into this community. It is going to be a lot longer than three minutes, so I'm just asking for anyone that is viewing this tonight that does not know enough about the renewal before they go to the ballot to please go to bbbreneualflagstaff.com to educate yourself a little bit more before you decide to vote. Also, on Thursday, the 26th, at the Aquaplex, from 5:00 to 7:00, we will be having a ballot question, open house. So the county, Mountain Line, as well as the city will all be there to answer questions for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Heather Damelin.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Madam Supervisor, City Council, and Board of Supervisors. If you don't know me, I'm Heather Damelin. I'm the CEO and General Manager for Mountain Line, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about Proposition 488. Proposition 488 is a result of years of study, planning, and public input about what is needed for the community's transit programs. Prop 488 would give Mountain Line the resources to continue operating existing services while weathering inflation and would allow for expansion of services to make transit a more attractive and reliable mode choice. The transit improvements would include more frequent bus service, that means the bus comes more often, making transit more convenient for all. Sorry. The, we would also expand our service hours to offer later night service and increase the number of hours in a day that we run peak service. Proposition 488 would also allow Mountain Line to expand to new areas. We anticipate Flagstaff will develop new residential and commercial hubs over the next decade, and this funding is crucial to enable us to bring service to those new areas. While Mountain Line has worked to be as financially efficient as possible and leverage the local tax to secure federal funds, the current level of funding cannot accommodate continued inflation or provide for enhancement to the programs. The cost of doing business and the makeup of Flagstaff are dramatically different today than when the current tax rate was set in 2008 or renewed in 2016. We have successfully delivered on all of the promises made in our previous ballot questions and have optimized our transit system to run in the most cost-effective way possible. With new partnerships like the one we have forged with FUSD to transport middle and high school students on their behalf, the need for a more robust transit system is increasingly evident. Mountain Line's role in this tax initiative is to educate the public about what it entails. Our public education efforts have included attending community events, sending mailers to residents, sharing information on social media, and presenting to community groups. Sorry. Mountain Line, our public education, I said that? You can view mountainline.a z.gov backslash prop488 to learn more. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all we have for call to the public. Next up is item number five, preview of the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan 2045 and 60-day public review and county comprehensive plan update.
Good afternoon, County Board of Supervisors and City Council. My name is Melissa Shaw. I am long-range planner with Coquenino County. I'm presenting this afternoon on behalf of Sarah Decter. Sarah is losing her voice, so she's here to answer questions, but we'll get through this, and then as we need to, we'll invite Sarah and other staff up to answer questions that you might have. And we'll run through several slides to give you an update on where we are in the process of the Flagstaff Regional Plan update, and then afterwards, we'll talk a bit about the county's comprehensive plan. This slide shows you the phases, the different phases that began in 2022 with the first phase of pretty much getting together the public to do their visioning work with the Flagstaff Regional Plan. Then we went through Phase Two, which was essentially the scenario planning process, which took a lot of the vision and the goals and then put them to work, looking at mapping and getting real with some of the data. We're now at the end of Phase Three, which took a, which began earlier this year when we started drafting the plan, meeting with an advisory group, going through legal review, and now we're preparing to move into the next phase, which would be the formal adoption by the city council, the city ballot initiative, and then finally adoption by Coquenino County. But back to Phase Three and where we are now, we are getting ready to launch into the required 60-day public review, and we wanted to give you information about where we are and answer your questions, so you're prepared for that. There's a little bit of a difference where the reason why it says plan development and county adoption is collaborate, the city has a bit of a different public participation process required for projects, and it's called empower for the city. I'm not 100% familiar with the city's public participation requirements, but that's the difference in why the collaboration is the county's level and then empower is the city's level. And this slide shows you what was developed from early in the process, really beginning before 2022, when Sarah did after-action interviews with users of the plan, people that have put work into the previous plan, and also a lot of staff input to really understand what was needed for this update in order to make this plan a success. And I'll just run through several of these. The plans need to be feasible and implementable. That's probably one of the most critical success factors, as well as being user-friendly and concise. And you'll hear us talk about these items a bit more as we go through the presentation. And these reflect community values, and that will also be clear in terms of how those are woven throughout the entire plan. Setting priorities, minimizing conflicting priorities, it has been a major emphasis of this project. Also, we are working hard to ensure that it includes a lot of diverse cultural perspectives in terms of land use, water, natural resources, and then obviously protection of forest sacred elements of land, water, air, and fire. We are thinking about vulnerabilities, uncertainties, and complexities, and that is what the scenario planning primarily focused on, is an uncertain future and looking at different scenarios for dealing with that. We're looking at the vision of different area plans and also specific plans. So you may know within the county, the regional plan area covers specific county area plans as well as specific plans in the city, and so we've taken into account the visions of all those different, those different communities. We're looking at activity centers and clarifying where they are and how achieving the activity in those centers are, is accomplished. And then finally, looking at affordability issues and cost concerns for the communities. This image shows you a picture of most of the 20 members of the Flagstaff Regional Plan Committee. They began meeting in January. They are meeting on Monday, a week from today, to review a final compiled version of the plan and to give you a final endorsement. Throughout the process, all their meetings, they have been provided with written public comments prior to their meetings, during their meetings, or after meetings through email and/or in person by using a public comment card. Written comments were not accepted during the online portion of the hybrid meeting chat feature, and that was a decision made by the committee in order to minimize any kind of inappropriate chatting comments. And so there were 20 minutes total per meeting allotted to public comment period, two and a half minutes per speaker. So that was well utilized during the meetings, and we did get a fair number of in-person attendees during these committee meetings. This image shows you the timeline for actually writing and drafting the Flagstaff Regional Plan. It seems fairly straightforward, but I just want to give a bit of a kudos to Sarah and the rest of her team because they're hundreds of hours behind what this took to get the plan drafted to this point. And I just want to bring you up to basically where we are now, and if you look at what's version five, then we are getting ready to begin the 60-day public review starting in October. And during that time, we'll also be going out to different boards and commissions with both Coquenino County and the City of Flagstaff to give specific updates to them, to make them, give them an opportunity to become familiar with the plan. And then, just so you know, then the 90% completion of the plan, which means that it will be in a final draft format, all of the editing should be done, that will be ready for you when you have a joint retreat scheduled in March of 2025. And then the 100% version will be ready for public hearings and the final review in June of 2025. So we're at the 50% completion date now, but what that means is that the final design is going to be completed, any final editing details, plus any final comments from the committee as we go into the 60-day public review. And so then, just getting into some more details on the 60-day public review, this is required by statute that the plan be available for 60 days for public comment and also comment by other agencies. The city staff has put together a very robust schedule for providing many different opportunities for the public to weigh in and take a look at this, including two webinars, four in-person workshops, and you can see those are listed on the screen there. There will be seven office hour opportunities where the public can drop in, talk to city or county staff at different locations around the region to ask questions in person. I believe those will be 11 to 2 on those days, and then a closing webinar. And so the 60-day public review, and this is something to keep in mind, will begin October 20th, and it will close on December 19th. So this will be a very busy time. It is around holidays and elections, but we believe that there's a lot of opportunity for public engagement during this, during this period. And then one other feature that the county is happy to provide for this, for the 60-day public review is to, we will host this on a public engagement website that we use to receive public comments, and people will be able to go online, review the draft document, put their comment in either on a specific word, line, paragraph, chapter. Other people will be able to view and respond to their comments, and the convenience of this is that we'll be able to download those comments into a spreadsheet that then we can share and analyze. So this will be available through a county-provided service. And so this slide lists five priority-focused areas of the Flagstaff Regional Plan, and this began early in the process when county and city staff went out and did essentially visioning workshops. This was prior to any of the scenario planning that occurred. This was very early in the process. It wasn't just workshops, but it was surveys, it was outreach, it was going to events and asking people to tell us what did they need about a land use plan, what did they envision for the future, what did they want to see in this Flagstaff Regional Plan update. So it landed on, through a lot of analysis, five main priority areas. And the first one was creating more housing attainability in all of the region's neighborhoods to mitigate displacement and reduce housing costs. This is not a new issue, but it's obviously continues to rise to the surface in terms of importance for plan elements. Create mixed-use denser neighborhoods that support a variety of housing types and that also support active transportation. We need that density to support transportation, and this is what came out pretty clearly during these early, this early outreach. Reducing community-generated climate pollution and protecting air quality also came out of these early, these early meetings with both city and county residents. And then with that, protecting the region's significant natural and cultural resources, which again, these are not necessarily new, but they come up time and again as being really important to our communities. And then finally, expanding the region's preparedness and resilience to hazards and climate change. This is something that did come up in all of this work. This next slide looks quite busy, and we won't go over every single bubble on it, but what this shows you is the interconnection of the major elements of the plan. The plan is primarily a land use document. It guides land use decisions going into the future for the next 20 years. However, it also is related to transportation, infrastructure, natural environment, climate, social and economic systems, open space parks and recreation, water, environmental planning. So all of these interconnected features of the plan are recognized. We want to, a slide later on, we'll give you a little bit more of an update as to how we're going to tie these together, but we want to make sure that we recognize the interconnectedness of the plan without repeating a lot of things. So in other words, without repeating policies among the different chapters, we have an idea about how to make those connections. So, but this does point out in a very graphic format that everything is related to another. You can't make a land use decision without talking about transportation. You can't talk about transportation without talking about need for density and housing and then how that works together to improve our climate and our quality. So these are important things to remember. It's a challenge to, in a document like this, to make it really clear how all the policies relate. But I think that there's a good, a good design going forward. And this slide shows you, to some degree, how the chapters will look. And so right now, this is how it's going to be organized. There will be an introduction and a how the plan works right off at the very beginning of the plan, and then that will get into, right after that, a goals and policy section. So a user then can look at the plan, understand how it works, start reading the goals and policies that will cover all the topics, and then go into the growth and land use framework section that gives background to what that means. And so all of the goals and policies then are tied to a chapter, if you will, with land use and growth being, you know, really the heart of the plan with these other sections. Also, some of them require by statute, others optional by statute, and those are in what's called the implementation section. But this is really where the good background resource information is, and that will be later on in the plan. So just organizationally, this is how it's being proposed. So you have a document, you can open it up and see what it looks like. This next slide shows you then in terms of how goals and policies are laid out, and then just to think about, again, you know, what a goal is. It's looking to the future, what our desire of future conditions are and how the plan is designed to achieve those. Policies are more specific in terms of how those goals are implemented and how we're going to go ahead and what path we will use to achieve that goal. And then we'll talk a bit more about the future growth illustration, but the land use categories are going to be shown parcel by parcel in terms of what the community wants to see in the future as far as land use in that future growth illustration, and we have an image to show you in a moment. I just want to mention here, though, that from the current plan, there's been a lot of work to make it more implementable and more user-friendly. Currently, the Flagstaff Regional Plan has 97 goals. The new plan proposes 23. It has, the current plan has over 500 policies, and the current plan is proposing 87. So there's been a lot of work to do that streamlining and make it more user-friendly and implementable. It's currently 350 pages. Currently, the unformatted version is 211 pages, so it may become a little bit less or a little bit more depending on how the final design is laid out. So just to give you a sense of the work that's gone behind that effort to really streamline, make it more pointed and much more user-friendly. There are some other, well, the implementation guidelines are new to this plan, and what they do, their assumptions, corresponding policies or principle, and they guide the goals and policies and how they're interpreted. So it gives you even more information in terms of a goal and a policy and what we need to think about and what that actually means and how that then can be applied in a land use decision. And then importantly, the action items are actual, it's almost like a work plan. They're actually strategies, projects, procedures, how we're going to make the plan truly come alive. And at this time, there are 30 action items proposed, 21 of those, I'm sorry, about 130 action items proposed. 20 of those, or 21, are prioritized. So you'll get to see those as far as what the community and what the regional plan committee identified as being priority action items for the next 20 years, which we try to accomplish a 20-year vision and then update it in 10. So there's really a short timeline for making the plan work because these are updated every 10 years. The next slide shows you, this is a slide that talks about maps. And so for this plan, for the regional plan, there are six what are called policy maps, the first one being the future growth illustration, and that's the one that's on the next slide. We'll show you that it does have parcel by parcel, specific land use categories for looking future, looking to the future for that anticipated growth. It also has, the other policy maps are the roads maps, the foots, the Flagstaff Urban Trail System map, the bikeway and pedways maps, great streets map, the future needs for parks and open space map, and gray separated crossings map. So these are actually policy maps in that they do guide decisions. They support policies, and they're maps that staff and the community will look at to make sure they're followed. And then the implementation section has more informational maps. They're maps that provide context, they provide more information, a background for interpreting the goals and policies. I don't know, I don't have an exact count on how many additional maps, but this plan does have a lot of visuals that really help to explain what the plan is trying to convey. And here's an image of that future growth illustration. When you will get this, you'll be able to zoom in and see parcel by parcel what the exact anticipated future land use category is for that. And then in the plan itself, there's a very detailed description of what that means. So you'll be able to look at a residential land use category, understand what the density will look like, understand what the building is anticipated to look like, that sort of thing, as well as tying that connection to transportation and road design and things like that. The current map is more, if you're familiar with the current future growth illustration, it's more, I would say, bubble-like, so it's not parcel-specific. And this way, this will actually reduce a lot of questions about interpretation for future land use categories. This slide, we don't have the symbols up here, but going back to the earlier busy flowchart that explained the interconnection between chapters, there's been, there have been six different themes that have come up, and this is where we plan to design symbols that can identify those themes and use those throughout the plan to try to tie those connections. So there'll be a symbol for climate action, equity, housing attainability, significant natural resources, active transportation, transit, and community character. So when you see that symbol throughout the document, you'll see how those are being connected and how they relate back to different sections of the plan and to each other. And the designer is, those are being developed right now, actually as of this week. And then this, this final slide, before we go into questions, shows you that the major and minor and administrative change procedures for plan amendments are being updated fairly significantly. The major plan amendments for the city are being simplified, and I do want to clarify that the city and county have different processes for updating a major or minor amendment. For the county, the Flagstaff Regional Plan is an amendment to the county's comprehensive plan, and so any amendment to the Flagstaff Regional Plan would be processed for the county under the county major minor amendment guidelines. But for the city, these procedures are being simplified and updated. One of the major changes is in how administrative changes are made. For instance, my understanding is currently a Scrivener's error or a map update needs to go through a minor amendment process, and that's being proposed to be changed to administrative. So errors and things like that would be much easier to change on the city's behalf. So you'll get a lot more information on this when you go to your retreat, and you can really look at the details about what the major and minor plan amendments, these are administrative, rather, this is an administrative process in terms of how amendments move forward through that public hearing process. And so I might have gone through that fairly quickly, but if there are questions, Sarah is here, I think she has enough of a voice, she could answer those, and then we'll talk about the county's comprehensive plan process.
When do you want specific questions, detailed questions, rather than just process questions?
There is a draft of the plan that's being reviewed by the committee, so if you have questions you would want us to take to the committee next week, this would be a good time to ask those, and I can make sure they're on the agenda. But the committee is still working through the process of endorsing this as you've asked them to, so nothing is completely final yet, but it's getting closer.
Well, maybe I didn't mean specific, specific. Well, maybe I didn't mean specific, specific. I'm wondering, so the city has our plans for handling affordable housing and trying to create affordable housing. And obviously, the county is different. And I'm wondering how those approaches might differ, and whether that's something that you think you can address at this point.
Yeah, so the, when we ran, the committee discussed this a lot, and so did staff. And whenever we arrived at a point where we felt the city and county had maybe a shared goal, or maybe a slightly nuanced, different goal, we've actually, and this is a different approach than the current plan, we've split them. So sometimes, there's like a, an A version of the goal, and it says "city only", and there's a B version that says "county only". Sometimes, that's because the context is so different in the rural areas of our region. And sometimes, it's just because our alignment, even though we're trying to head the same direction, we're starting from a slightly different point in a policy or a goal-setting conversation. Would you add anything to that?
No, but that was a decision that we presented to the, the committee early on, and they agreed to basically having those dual, identify the places where maybe there's a bit of a different approach. So, so that's been how the policy development has, has worked throughout their review process.
So this committee is really, they're looking at policies for both the city and the county and coming up, that's a lot of work. Thank you, committee and staff. Any questions before we move into the city's portion of this? The county, I'm sorry, the county's portion of this? Yes, please.
Thanks, Mayor. We were at an F-cubed meeting last night where this was being discussed. One of the things that came up was, what is the process when the regional plan is coming forth and is approved if there are planning and zoning ordinances that are not in alliance with it? What ends up happening?
So, thank you Supervisor Horstman. The, the staff at the city and county are going to need to, at some point, start looking at these other related policies and codes and ordinances. Some of what you'll see in the action items are, are identified as being like, we need code updates in these areas. The committee, obviously, there's probably code updates beyond what you have staff capacity to do sometimes. There's always a big, long list that we'd want to get to. The committee has set some of them, particularly as a priority, and said these ones are actually really critical to move forward quickly. And so, that is part of the review for the 60 days. And when we get to the retreat with all of you, that'll also be part of the discussion, is how to create a work program that brings up the other policies that need revision so that everything stays in alignment. But it usually happens after voters have approved the ballot initiative for the city or the supervisors have adopted the amendment to the comprehensive plan.
And I would just add to that, we have been looking at that relationship all along and identifying where there may be a dis, a misalignment between city and county and calling that out right up front. So I think that we've tried to, throughout the process, write into the draft of the Flagstaff Regional Plan where they're, identify that right from the beginning. And so, and then, where we see that there is a need, as Sarah was saying, for a code update, for instance, call that out in the action items.
And it may not be as much of a misalignment as it would be just maybe difference in priorities.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any additional questions, so please, carry on.
Thank you, and this was a good opportunity then to-
Excuse me, we do have, we do have one, we have a comment.
I just want to thank the team, you know, both the city and the county, you know, in working on this effort, because housing affordability is something that we all face, all in and out, you know, within their overall county. And I've been to several of these meetings, and there's a lot of people that show up for these meetings. And so, it was opened, and, and a lot of comments were taken, taking those back, and, you know, reincorporating, you know, the ones that could be incorporated. So I just wanted to say thank you to the staff on both sides, the city and the council, and thank you for having us.
Well, you're welcome. And I just, the city has been, the city staff has been really great to work with. So we've appreciated the opportunity this time. And this was a good opportunity, then, to give you an update and as to where we are with the county's comprehensive plan. And just, I just have a very few slides on this. So we began, again, the required 10-year update to the Coquenino County Comprehensive Plan. We began with a scoping workshop in January of 2023. And then, just to emphasize again, the Flagstaff Regional Plan is an amendment to the county's comprehensive plan. Whoops, it's advancing on its own. And these are both required by statute. So both the city and county are required to have the general plan for the city, which is the regional plan, and then the comprehensive plan for the county. So if you look across the state of Arizona, there is a lot of these, these plans going on at the same time. So we're all, seem to be in a, in a similar 10-year cycle. The advisory group, the comprehensive plan advisory group, began meeting in July this summer, and they are just starting to review draft chapters. They'll be meeting this week on Thursday to review the first couple of chapters. This is just a very simplified version in terms of the timeline for updating the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, we began in 2023 with a scoping workshop where we pulled together users of the plan, similar, I think, to what, what Sarah did, and really tried to identify what people like about the current plan, what would maybe need to be changed. And then, we, we did data collection analysis and started to get organized through December of 2023. And then, starting in January of this year, and actually, the year before, we did a lot of, we've done a lot of outreach to our communities. And we are, at this time, then, we are in the writing phase. As I mentioned, we've got our advisor group formed, we are drafting chapters now, and we are looking to having a plan ready for adoption this spring. There is a major difference between the regional plan and the county's comprehensive plan is that the comprehensive plan does not contain a future land use map. It is primarily a policy document guiding land use decisions. This is a map of the county, as you know. The blue rectangle around Flagstaff, just kind of for reference, is the, the planning area for the regional plan. So this does provide you with context for, you know, how large the county is, the different communities that we try to reach out to. We've done a lot of, a lot of outreach with focus groups and an open house and surveys, a county-wide survey, it's all on our website. If you're interested in seeing what our visioning work has been done to date, and, you know, it's, it's been a process where we've, we've tried to connect with as many communities as possible throughout the whole county, as well as community members, community-based organizations, business associations, environmental groups, our indigenous nations, advisory boards, commissions, and then, public agencies. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the county's comprehensive plan update process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, supervisors, any questions or comments? I don't see any, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Okay, so now, we're moving down to item number six. I'm sorry, I was having a mouse malfunction. Discussion with City of Flagstaff and Coquenino County staff regarding wildfire risk and insurance challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett and council and Chair Brigade and Board of Supervisors. I'm Jay Smith, I'm the Forest Restoration Director for Coquenino County, and we're here to talk about the homeowner's insurance issue that we're, we're all dealing with. And I say that from a personal perspective, five years ago, just real quickly, I was denied insurance from one company when I was looking, because they said I'd have to cut every tree on my property in Kachina Village to, to be insured due to the wildfire risk that their risk analysis agency had told them about. And just recently, my, the insurance that I have said, I had to sign a paper saying they could cut every tree on my property if a fire's coming toward my house, and that they could spray my house down with foam to try to protect my house. So those are things happening just to me personally. And the county continues to get calls about this issue from homeowners, sometimes on a weekly basis. So we know it's, it's out there, we've been, and, and I think the city and the county both have been working to try to address this and to see how we move forward with this. Just some quick stats to start off with. So Arizona leads the nation with 62% surge in homeowner's insurance rates over the last five years. Now, this is not all related to wildfire risk, but wildfire risk is a big portion of this. But we wanted to just kind of throw that stat out there. That's, that, to me, was a little bit alarming to see that. On some nationwide wildfire structure loss statistics, you can see that we've had, in 2018, a really bad year across the, the country, and especially in the West. 2020, again, another bad year. And we've been on a downward trend, thankfully. A couple of good winters in, across the West has helped with that. But we know we're just one year away from, from having a, a bad year again, one, one wildfire season across the West. And I think one of the reasons that this is starting to go down a little bit is communities and wildfire and fighter, firefighter resources are coming quicker to the communities, especially when there's fires near the Wui, trying to help prevent those, those from burning homes. In 2018, Coquenino County lost 96 structures in the tender fire, 33 of those being homes. And in 2022, we lost 54 structures with 30 being homes in the tunnel fires. So, you know, it's something that has hit close to home. And to talk about the policy side of this, I'm going to let Gregory, our Government Affairs Director, talk to you about those things.
Thank you, Jay and board members. Mayor, thank you for having us here today. Just to start out, we, we've recently engaged the DIFI Director, that's the Department of Financial Institutions and Insurance. They're the state regulatory agency that regulates insurance at the state agency. Her name's Dr. Barbara, Mrs. Barbara Richardson. Arizona's, does not have significant state policy for DIFI to get engaged on this issue. The legislature, the governor, are really the policymakers that would engage. We have requested that the, the DIFI Director create a task force to bring together stakeholders among counties, cities, insurance industry, fire professionals, a multidisciplinary task force to evaluate and look at what policy solutions could be reasonable for Arizona. We're aware of some solutions across the United States, but what works in some states may not work in Arizona. We're continuing to engage with the governor's office, and we're awaiting a decision on whether that task force would be created. The DIFI Director did bring it up to the governor, and we followed up as well. This is a nationwide problem. Communities across the nation are seeing crises in, in the insurance industry in a climate change context. For example, we have convective thunderstorms in the Midwest, hail flooding on the East Coast, sea level rise, and then wildfires, as we're familiar with here today. And so, each community is really engaging with this issue across the nation. And insurance is not regulated federally. So each state insurance commissioner and state department is really the key institution. And it would be something unique if we were to get federal policy around this issue. We've seen rising insurance premiums, mine just went up 70%, 400% since 2019. We have a refusal to cover in some instances. And then, there's limited market solutions in, in northern Arizona as what some Stanford professors have mentioned is the declining data-based insurance actuarial analysis, because we have such unpredictable weather now that our models that have historically been accurate are no longer accurate. And so, for example, First Street Foundation, which is a nonprofit watchdog that looks at flood insurance and policymaking on the private sector, Coquenino County is ranked number 11 in the United States for projected average annual structures destroyed, and number 12 for projected annual loss in terms of actual monetary value. The good news is that other jurisdictions in the state, for example, Pima and Maricopa are forecast to have an intensification in this. And we're really at the place right now where our intensification will not go up too high. And as you know, in 2023, we did not see that type of loss with 183 structures predicted. So we are making significant progress in terms of our forest restoration initiative, the City of Flagstaff's watershed protection program. These investments that the board and the council are making have significant ability to move the needle and protect our community. So I don't want to be all doom and gloom, I want to focus on what's positive and what you, as elected bodies, have been able to do with the financial decisions that you've made on behalf of our community. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Jay, who will discuss a brief bit on the community wildfire protection plan that's going on here in the county.
So we partnered with the Greater Flagstaff Forest Partnership last year to apply for one of the community wildfire defense grants, the CWPP. What we're looking at doing is a, a novel county-wide, looking at the rural fire districts and the tribal communities. I'm sure you'll hear, and Neil's probably talked to you about, the, the City of Flagstaff was also awarded a, a CWPP grant for doing the redoing and updating the, the Greater Flagstaff CWPP. So we, we're just now waiting on the funding to get here from the Forest Service to the state to us so that we can begin that work. We're going to be looking at 10 rural fire districts and six tribal communities across Coquenino County. CWPPs, while not directly related to this insurance issue, are kind of sub-related to it in the way that we want to do projects that reduce, and I love Neil's tagline, that, you know, our goal is to reduce the number of homes that are burning. And CWPPs are meant to do just that, to find where that risk is at and then to, to set projects in place that will reduce that, that wildfire risk on communities. And so, that, the nexus is there. You know, I was, I was arguing with myself, trying to figure out that if I don't know what the insurance companies want, or what they want to see that we can, so they would feel more comfortable insuring homes, then how do I know what kind of projects to do? And really, that is one thing, but ultimately, our goal is to reduce homes burning, and that will bring all of that down. So, you know, I was trying to overcomplicate, I think, in my own mind, but at the same time, it would be nice, but they, they just, they haven't been willing to tell us what, what moves the needle for them to, to write insurance policies in these high-risk areas, or what will lower that risk in their mind. So we're going to continue to, to find those ways to, to do those projects. And the CWPPs really set that up so that we can now apply for further grants. Each community's can apply for these grants or the county. And so, that's what, that's what our goal is in these community wildfire protection plans, is to do, to do just that. And then, moving forward, just so, for easy of transition, you know, we're going to continue to work on the CWPP development with GFFP and with a consultant. We're not going to go into the detail, I don't have the, 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 really, the, the size that I'm looking at, where Neil's going to be able to get down to parcel-level detail on his. I'm probably a few years away from doing that on, in the county, because some of these don't even have CWPPs. And we're just kind of writing that initial plan and getting those communities involved, trying to find out who's going to do that work on the ground in those local communities. So we're a little behind on that. Luckily, Neil's going to set some groundwork for us, and then we can, we can work off of that and see what works in those programs that he's setting up. You know, understanding those insurance, again, is, is going to be, would be good, but it's not necessary completely. I mean, we just have yet been able to get the insurance companies to tell us any of that information. And then, again, our continued partnership with the City of Flagstaff, as we worked it together to, to solve this issue, is going to be key as we move forward. And then, I know Greg's got some things on the policy side.
Yeah, thank you, Jay. Just so everyone knows, and council and, and board here, the County Supervisors Association is going to be looking at a resolution from Pima County here at the Legislative Summit that they'll be hosting here in two weeks in Pinale County. Pima County Board has been reached out by a neighborhood on the top of Mount Lemon who cannot find insurance, so this issue is, is brewing in Pima, it's brewing in Yavapai County. As we just, as we found out earlier this week, Representative Bliss has been briefed on the issue, so we're going to be meeting with her. on the issue, so we're gonna be meeting with her. We're gonna continue to advocate with the legislature, the governor's office, and DIFI for the stakeholder group. Really, what we're finding is that fire and insurance professionals speak different languages. There are different professionals. They have different expertise, different traditions, cultures. And so how do we build the necessary institutional framework so that those collaborative conversations can occur among our fire professionals and insurance industry to look at how to move the needle forward, so that insurance companies have an accurate understanding of what's happening on the ground, like what happened today with the prescribed fire north of town? And so looking at how do we get data and then disseminate that data is a re, really key piece in terms of creating the framework to do this. And so we, we've been engaging with our treasurer. Treasurer Benatar has been leading in this field as it relates to some of the issues that she's been experiencing, as it relates to managing the county and special districts funding. There's a professor at UC Berkeley, Dr. Dave Jones, who's an expert in the field. We're gonna be meeting with him to determine what type of policy solution could work in Arizona that doesn't deal with some of the unintended consequences that we've seen in California, for example, where mitigation hasn't been incentivized when there's an insurance plan that's set up. And so we're gonna look at how do we collaborate with the building community, because part of what you as a council and board have is the ability to change building codes. And how do we look at, you know, hardening structures and implementing firewise practices that balance equity and affordability? Some of these types of implementation could be quite expensive, and we know that some of our most vulnerable neighborhoods have the least ability to pay. So there's definitely a socioeconomic component here. And so with that, we want to continue to be supportive of our Flagstaff Fire Department and the great work that you'll hear from them here in a few seconds, and the work that they're doing to resource this endeavor from the fire side. So in terms of the county, that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Several months ago, because we're all talking about this insurance issue, and, and it's beginning to be a crisis, it was discussed when we do our code review, I guess it would be, our policy review, to look at our resource overlay policy in Flagstaff that requires a certain percentage of trees to stay in a development. How, do you know anything about that that we're looking into, and will that help make a difference? And here comes Neil.
I would defer to the fire department on that. Is there the experts when it comes to that?
And I'm asking, would it, will it impact, will it help us to obtain more favorable fire insurance coverage?
I, I think so. There's everything from the parcel level to the neighborhood level to the city, to the community, to the county. All these levels of data need to start syncing together, and we're not doing that so well right now. And so that's, that's definitely something that we're working towards through this, this code analysis effort, and trying to better align the tree retentions in the way of science-based information versus kind of cultural-based, you know, where we want to make sure we're setting homeowners up for success. There's a great way we can do that before communities are built, so we're not packing trees in the backyards or packing trees right next to somebody's house, where they may think that's a great idea, while their insurance company may not think that's...
Hey, I just heard my name. Sound cut out there for a little bit. I may have missed some of that response. That's okay, Neil. I'm sure you'll have a chance to revisit this. My question is along a similar lines. I, get my camera on here, too. I'm really grateful for this conversation. I think we're all in recognition that this is a huge brewing problem, and it's a critical existential threat to our affordable housing. You know, and, and I, I just, I just want to be careful. I want to make sure that we're not, we're not preemptively prescriptive with perceived solutions on this. I do worry about tinkering with our resource overlay protections too much as an initial gameplay. So I, I have a couple of questions. One question is, what is the resolution at which insurance companies decide insurance rates? My assumption is that it's usually at the county level. And if it's at the county level, that can be very problematic with resource protection as a potential solution to this problem, just because you can live in a place like Downey Park that doesn't have any trees. And what are we, what are we affecting with that? The other thing, I, I just wanted to be sure to have out there on the table, you know, I want to make sure we're not applying a Band-Aid to a case of pneumonia here. We need to, we need to really be certain that our, our solutions are going to affect the problem. I think being firewise and being, you know, really taking some preemptive measures, say Jay was talking about, you know, how he's thinking about other way, you know, trying to second guess what the insurance companies want, and then coming to the conclusion that he was probably overthinking things a little bit. And so I think at this stage right now, we're, we're, we're doing the right things. We're doing what we can within reason to just make this a more firewise community anyway, which we should absolutely be doing. But we're gonna have a large problem with the community if we don't tackle this problem correctly from a resource overlay perspective, and we start designing neighborhoods without trees. That is not going to help lower temperatures. It's not gonna help with ecosystem health. It's not gonna help with habitat corridors. And there's a lot of things to keep in balance there. And, and I realize it's, these things are probably gonna balance out nicely in the end, but I wanna, I wanna be there in the initial stages with a strong push to make sure that we're not correcting a problem that's not the problem. So, yeah, talk to me about the resolution at which these insurance decisions are generally made. And maybe speak again, Neil, I didn't catch the answer to the question of, you know, a resource overlay downgrades. Is that, is that gonna affect the bottom line? Who in the insurance industry has said that if you put less trees on your, on your plots, we're gonna lower your insurance rates? Thank you.
Chair Horstman, did you want to dive in before I go in?
Just real quick, because I know, I want to hear from you on this, too, but I agree with everything that Councilmember Aslan indicated. That's, you know, the bottom line, there's two approaches. One, of course, we want to reduce, we want to have firewise communities. We want to reduce our risk to catastrophic wildfire. We're doing that through forest restoration. We're doing that through CWPP. All that's great. And we're gonna continue to do that. But I agree a hundred percent, we gotta deal with this insurance problem. And we need to find that language. We need to somehow work together to be able to find a common language, because it isn't gonna help if the insurance company doesn't give a darn what we do with forest restoration or CWPP. So, you know, it's, and I know that's been your point as well, Neil. And, and so, and I hope that the city and the county, I mean, this is so integral to what's going on. The city and the county really need to be together moving forward on this. And, and there's two approaches, but we got a real problem right now with the insurance as well. So, thank you.
And Vice Mayor, I think you're, you're spot on on how we balance, you know, what, what we're saying, if we need more density of housing in our communities. And, oh, sorry, we, we, we have this, this conflicting reality of, we, we're trying to build more dense communities. And at the same time, we have some of these themes that, that we can get into at another time. Insurance companies are, are starting to say, we want five feet away from your house with no flammable material. Well, if you have two houses that are ten feet apart, where are the trees gonna go? And so we currently have some codes that say you have to protect a certain percentage of trees that are on your site, not a certain density of trees based on a natural condition. And so if we can get these things in alignment, where we leave trees where it's appropriate to leave trees, we're gonna reduce the costs of the developers putting the communities together. We're gonna reduce the cost for the homeowners after they've bought these homes, so the insurance companies don't come back and say, well, you've got to cut this tree. Well, if we had cut that tree before the house was built, it's, it's very low cost. It could now be a two thousand dollar tree once that house is built. And so really, setting up our neighborhoods for success through this, this integrated process, because you, you know, a lot of the things we're learning right now, we don't know exactly what the insurance companies want. The scale of data that they want, they don't have right now, because they'll take, I mean, they pay a lot of money for those three or four companies that produce models that they buy. They pay a lot of money for that, and those models are not getting at that fine scale, because that data doesn't exist. So if we need to, we need to fill these gaps, where it's like, yes, there's these, these regional maps of, you know, fire risk that kind of get into a county or a, a couple thousand acre scale of, of project-level identification, but they're not identifying homeowners that have done the risk reduction on their property. They're not identifying neighborhoods that have done risk reduction on their property. And so this is this, this data gap that we really need to start getting into. And I've got a slide where we can talk a little bit more about data gaps. But I think this is, this is part of the role that we see local people being able to play, is how can we stop burning down homes and do that in a way that starts to inform these data gaps with the insurance companies? I mean, if they had this data, they'd be using it. They don't have this data, so they're not using it. And then I think just to, to balance some of the expectations here, there's always going to be a level of reality where the global insurance or reinsurance markets have these fluctuations, where a natural disaster occurs somewhere and the reinsurance market rates go up. And I think that's about twice a year they reassess those things possibly. Well, then an insurance company might just say, we're too exposed in areas where previously we thought we weren't too exposed to risk. And suddenly, people start losing their policies, even if they've done all the work. So there's always going to be a level of variability here. And so how we best inform that variability? Because right now, an insurance company might say, hey, northern Arizona, we have, we have too much exposure up there. The next ten policies that come up, we gotta drop them. And it's not based on what are the ten worst policies that we have up there. So if we can start to build that parcel level data, then it incentivizes people to do the work. And we start to connect those dots on, on the lack of the data at those different scales.
And I'll just add on- Thank you for that, Neil. Just real quickly, I, you know, I just want to reiterate, I, I don't think we want to enter a scenario here where we have a future where insurance companies are dictating what communities look like, and insurance companies dictate that there can be no trees within cities. That's absolutely ridiculous, and this is a problem we should have solved forty years ago, so we're not having this conversation today. But we need to be very careful when talking about resource overlays and not cutting down trees that we don't need to, when the insurance companies are gonna raise rates anyway for other reasons. So again, I'm still looking for an answer to the question around resolution. Are, are these rates decided at a zip code level, or is it, is it a neighborhood level? Or how granular, granular does it actually get?
So, in what research I've done, it can be countywide to regional-wide. But then, as Neil was saying, they get affected by stuff that happens. Our insurance can get affected by hurricanes that happen in the southeast, just because that's how insurance companies work. And so we, we have really no control over that. It's, it's getting to the point where we can, because right now, we can't say to a landowner, if you do all this work on your property, you're guaranteed to keep your insurance. We can't say that. And so we have to, we have to get the insurance companies to the point to where they're looking more granular. But if they don't have the data, they're, they don't have any data to look at. So that's what we're, one of the things we're working on.
Yeah. And to that end, when we met with DIFI and engaged with the insurance industry representative, data is really the key problem. Even DIFI knows that. They're not resourced to really manage the data. They have a lack of data. The federal government put out a call over the summer in terms of looking at how this data is being collected by the different states. And so they're looking at and how to evaluate the data that they're gonna be sending to the federal government. And so we really need to get those collaborative environments together between the stakeholders to bring forward these conversations so that we can get a consensus on the data. And, and that's a real, real issue. And not only, you know, does insurance impacted here in the United States, it's impacted worldwide with some of these companies, because they are, you know, you think about global financial institutions. Insurance companies are a financial risk management strategy in the global financial market. And so, you know, we live in a global financial market at this point, and insurance companies, what happens in China will influence what happens in the United States. And so we need to look at that, you know, from a worldwide climate model, if you will.
One last comment on resource protection. We are not aligned with the best available science right now. And neither are the insurance companies. And that's the, the goal that we're trying to put together, is to make sure that our resource protection is aligned with the science that tells us how to best protects, protect homes, and that the insurance companies also understand the science, that they can be making decisions on risk and how best to protect homes. So it's not that we're saying we want to cut down all the trees at all. We're actually saying we want to be better at making sure we're protecting the right trees and not just randomly distributing these things in ways that, that could be problematic and add cost later on.
Thank you.
Neil, I really like the phrasing of that. I think it's a good way to frame things. And if we're keeping the best practices according to science in mind, that's how we should be moving forward. I don't think we should be trying to appease or please insurance companies preemptively when we don't even know what they want, and they don't even know what they want. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, this is Lena Fowler, Coquenio County Supervisor. I just, this is a really important conversation that we're having. It is, it is an issue throughout the, the country. I am the National Counties Association Rural Action Caucus Chair, which is really the rural counties, which makes up about seventy percent of the counties in the country. And this is one of the priorities that we have this year to really study and address and bring to our congressional delegation in Congress. So I just want to appreciate the conversation here. And we're hearing this from across the, across the country, from various counties, and we're trying to see how we might be able to address it. So I just want to add that to the conversation here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all very much for the presentation and the information. I put a Q in the chat, but it's probably more of just a comment. So don't feel the need to try and, and answer anything here. But I just find it interesting, in the midst of all of this, one of the things that you said very early in the conversation was that insurance is not regulated federally, and, and yet we have all of these issues. And as we're looking at the collective conversation about wildfire risk and our, our city land use plan, the county comprehensive plan, all of those things, and, and some of the primary topics coming up are housing affordability and attainability and those sorts of things. It's very interesting to me that a, a regulation like insurance that has such a major impact on attainability, affordability, is not regulated. At the same time, as we're seeing federal legislation coming down, that is regulating things like housing costs or what's available for affordable housing and so forth. So I guess my, my main comment here is just, I'm wondering what it will take for us to redirect some of that federal attention or, or legislative attention to this industry that is controlling so much of the affordability, the water use, wildfire risk, all of these things that are kind of collectively pulled and, and impacted by something that does not have regulation or, or legislation in place to protect against kind of that monopolized control. So again, not, not really a question that I expect you to have an answer for, but just what's kind of rolling through my head right now after your presentations. So, thank you very much.
I think, I think we can kind of get to a little bit of a framework in, at the state level, how we envision some of this stuff coming together in, in the next presentation.
Supervisor Voskis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question, earlier, during the presentation, you mentioned that we are not currently using, aligned with best practices and science and, and what says we should be doing to address forest fire situation. Could you please elaborate on that? Give some examples or whatnot?
I think we're aligned, and, and we'll, I'll get into the natural environment. We know in the, in the woods, there's emerging stuff in the neighborhood and the science around the risk reduction, its structure, what we call the built environment, that the science in some of this stuff is, is being updated very recently. And, and at the same time, the policy at the state level on how insurance companies are allowed to rec- allowed to recognize that you've done certain things, they can't score you in a certain way because you've done recommendations that the state doesn't allow them to score you over. So if, we'll get into this, but if there's not a framework of how, of things we tell homeowners to do, then the insurance companies can't recognize that they've done those things. So this is where aligning the decision making of how insurance companies that operate in Arizona can make decisions, that's, that's at the state level. We have opportunities to to improve that. Does that, does that make sense? Okay.
I have a comment that also illustrates how worked up we all are over this. I find it, and and not that it's the entire fault of the insurance industry, I'm not trying to blame the entire industry, but homeowners have paid into their insurance premium, their insurance policies for years and decades, many of us without ever having a claim. And so now, when we are needing this assistance to have it either denied or put out of our financial reach is irritating at the very least. That's not really directed at any of you. It's kind of out to, you know, all the insurance professionals who are watching this council meeting. And I'm wondering, this is a legitimate question, are we seeing insurance companies lobbying for climate action? I mean, because they are a powerful force. And if if their policies are increasing because of all of this weather that we can't predict and and these mass tragedies, are they at the front line of lobbying on behalf of climate action?
Yes, there are insurance companies that are lobbying for climate action as well as banks because their assets are at risk when there's climate disaster. And so insurance industry, there are folks within it. It's not a uniform industry. There's many different people with different backgrounds and different ideologies. And yes, there are some individuals, particularly within the environment, social and governance world, ESG, you may have heard, they're, they're definitely lobbying for climate action because it's an exposure to everyone, from crop insurance to homeowners to fire, to flood, you name it. It's, it's affecting everyone. And so that's really, when we talk about homeowners insurance, we're talking about climate as well. So there are definitely people there and we need to build more alliances with them. Our treasurer has been linked in with them. Sarah Benatar, just want to recognize her. She's been recognized in the field of some of this issue and she's been connecting with those insurance companies and and banks as well.
Thank you. And then just one tiny little point, WUII is Wildland Urban Interface.
Correct.
Correct? That's also for the insurance companies that are listening to our council meeting.
One more thing I would add is that the banks, we have not seen the mortgage lenders get involved with the regulation of the insurance industry because when we start to see insurance companies refusing to provide service, that will influence the mortgage industry. We've not yet crossed that tipping point, but that is something that we're monitoring very closely and we would be engaging with them as well if and when we get a stakeholder group established.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions or comments. So now, Neil, you may proceed with your presentation, but we're still worked up.
Thank you. Good. I want everybody worked up. Okay, so on your, on your desk over there, we, I gave you a copy of these. These are a new booklet that we've got. It was funded through a grant from the associate, or International Association of Fire Chiefs, Wildfire Action Guide. It includes information about defensible space, home hardening, evacuation notes. We have a lot of copies of these. Please let me know at any point if you want more copies or if you want the digital version as well. All right, so building off what what Jay and Greg just talked about, we're going to kind of get into a little background of what we've been working on for a while now, defining the problem, best available science, who are the subject matter experts, key questions in this proposed framework that we've been working on. So natural environment, you know, thinking about the forest, you guys have actually heard us talk about this quite a bit. And natural environment fuel buildup due to fire suppression and fire exclusion. We often forget to mention the exclusion part. I always want to mention this, it's really important. The the alterations of our forest and the structure and the pattern, it wasn't just from snuffing out lightning strikes, indigenous cultural burning that took place for thousands of years was criminalized. It wasn't just said, you know, people said, please don't do it. It was criminalized. So that was a huge component of the changes on our landscape. So this photo here, the Walker Lake area, 1876 or so on top, about 100 years later, that's the the change that we're seeing across the landscape. So now we think, where, where is the wildfire risk? We used to think it was out there somewhere. It was out in the woods. Well, if you look at this picture, the woods on the north half there, those have been thinned. The south half there, that's, that's pretty dark and scary when we look at the tree density in there. That north half is what the the natural condition should be. So that south half there, as we, as we look, that's up Highway 180 and the Cheshire Gas Station right here, wildfire risk is right where all the homes are. You know, the fire, if it starts in the built environment, moves into the natural environment, that area is going to be fine. If it starts in the natural environment, moves into the built environment, that built environment is not going to be fine. So really, looking at where the fire risk is over the years, as we've been working so hard in the natural environment, some of the work in the built environment now is a little lagging. We've been doing the work in the built environment without quite as many presentations, but for over 20 years, Flagstaff Fire Department's been in people's driveways, helping them reduce wildfire risk on their properties, providing cost share grants to help people reduce fuels, providing guidance on things they can be doing to create better defensible space and home hardening. Here's another spot. This is Observatory Mesa Natural Area right here on the left and then the rest, West Ridge Community over here on the right, where our burn was today, was kind of just north of this area here. But again, thinned forest on the left, we've actually done some prescribed fire in there as well. Look how dense that is where the homes are. So we, we've got a lot of work, a lot of work to do in there. Mark Adams, our Community Risk Reduction Specialist, has really been focusing on this neighborhood for some cost share grants to help them remove fuels. And while I'm name dropping, I'm sorry, Paul O'Trogi was supposed to be here today. He couldn't make it. He's online listening and sends his apologies that he couldn't make it with us today. So we put this presentation together, Wildland Battalion Chief, Paul O'Trogi. So as we look at this picture, you know, think about it, where, where is the wildfire risk that's going to have negative impacts? And not to pick on you, Chair Horseman, but they're both in your district. And so then we get, you know, focusing a little bit more on this built environment concept, transitioning away from, you know, the watersheds and and the forest. Natural environment investments alone are not going to provide us with comprehensive risk reduction. Science-based built environment wildfire mitigations have proven themselves to be successful. This example right here from the fire that ravaged Maui, the, in the Lahaina area, that home wasn't burned because they had actually not strategically done wildfire risk reduction work, but they had done some work there to reduce, I believe it was around insect infestations and termites. And basically, they had a metal roof, they cleared vegetation around the sides of their home, and they created defensible space, not necessarily, again, for wildfire, but it was the same thing that they were doing. And now look at that neighborhood, the one home that had created defensible space survived. So it, this stuff works. Unfortunately, we have a lot of evidences of it working in areas that have had catastrophic fires. And so the city of Flagstaff's adopted a WUII code in 2008. We've, like I said, we've been in people's driveways since the 90s, working on this stuff. We know it has impact, but we need to scale this stuff up. It can't just be a city code. We've got to have these larger efforts across a larger landscape because the insurance companies, again, when they're running these models and they're saying, oh, well, this area has some WUII codes and this area doesn't, the baseline becomes this area doesn't. And and so the, you know, we, we all lift ourselves up when we expand these codes across a much larger landscape. And again, the intent there is really not based on increasing costs by adding these codes. These codes, as we're studying ways to do this, our intent is to reduce costs by putting this work in upfront. So talking a little bit about the best available science, who we're, we're working with these days, we've got the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA. They have what's called the Firewise USA Program. So you've heard of neighborhoods that get Firewise USA certified. Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety, IBHS, this is a big player in this space. They have these facilities where they build homes of different types, then they blow embers and they put flaming fronts and they basically burn down homes and study how these homes burn down. We're getting a lot of lessons learned on building materials and vegetation around the homes from that group. And then in the National Institute of Standards and Technology has been doing a lot of work studying fire spread through communities as well. Both natural and built environment, this is a new term we're kind of working through in understanding this, fire pathways. When fire hits a community, where is it likely to come from and what's it likely to do when it gets in the community? So we're working with a company called Xyloplan and a chief out of California that's in that same group to potentially bring some of this research into our Flagstaff area, CWPP. Structure fire spread and vulnerability models, this is really amazing stuff. I'll show you a slide in just a second. Dr. Mahmood from Colorado State University has this new model where in the past, we could kind of model fire spread through the forest, through a grassland. There's these robust vegetation models. Before we do a prescribed burn, we model what's going to happen. All of those models shut down when you hit a neighborhood. We have new models that keep it going. So now we can basically look at homes as another form of flammable material and model structure fire spread through communities. And then, of course, the Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission report that Lucinda from the county and myself, we both were in that room and have lots of lessons learned and relationships with folks through that group that are really important right now. So so this information is out there. It's just not well organized or agreed upon at a state level in Arizona. So when we go to a home and we give them some assessment information on what they should be doing with their property, it's, it's going to reduce their actual wildland fire risk, but it's not based upon something that the state says, that's what we want you to be telling people. So think about that. We're doing the work on the ground, actually reducing the risk. We're just not currently doing it in a way that informs these larger challenges. And so this is Dr. Mahmood's work out of Colorado State University. On the left, in red are the homes that burned in the campfire through the town of Paradise, and the blue are the ones that survived. So here's his model on the right side of the screen there. The red is likely to burn, blue is likely to survive. He's about 85% successful in predicting what structures would have burned in that community. I don't really know how they're doing this yet. We sat with him through about an hour long presentation. And again, I, I couldn't follow. It's pretty aggressive modeling, but we know what the output is and we want it for our communities here. So we're working with, with his program and some funders to figure out how we can bring this into our community wildfire protection plans. And then the subject matter experts that we've been relying on for some information, we actually have an MOU now with Headwaters Economics as we're going through some of this code analysis. Dr. Kimiko Barrett, she's been amazing in this space. David Sampson, CEO of American Property Casualty Insurance Association. Dr. Barrett and David Sampson, we're both on the wildfire commission. They take our calls. It's very important. We keep them that way. Same thing with Michelle Steinberg with NFPA. These are contacts that we constantly are reaching out to and getting advice on how we move these things forward. Nancy Watkins with a company called Millman, she's created a WUII Data Commons Project. We're plugged in with that. And again, this is understanding what data do the insurance companies need and how do they get it? And then there's some, some issues as well about security of that information. If we suddenly come up with a model that shows a neighborhood is incredibly high risk, does that information go public? Do we, you know, how do we utilize that information? And Chief Frank Fry vault retired from Mammoth, Mammoth, California, was a fire chief, and now he's the director of the Cal Poly WUII Fire Institute. We've got a framework that we kind of stole from him. Chief Winnaker, again, from the Moraga, Orunda Fire District. Michael Newman with IBHS. Dr. Mahmood again with CSU and Juliana there with Verisk. This was another company we, we've been in touch with, better understanding the, the models that they're providing. So insurance companies pay Verisk for their wildfire risk models to make decisions. And and we don't, we don't get access to that output of their model. You have to be, you have to purchase that information. But what we do have access to is be, be helping them inform what they're using to make their models. So the, the, the example that we're using right now is we can give them the ingredients, we just don't get in the kitchen. And and so once they start cooking, the door gets closed. But how they put ingredients into their, into their recipe, how they value, how much of those ingredients they put into their recipe, all of that stuff is open and we can contribute into that. It's not going to violate some sort of, you know, business rules or secrecy or anything. So the questions we've been asking these people really are based on why is wildfire risk so hard to measure? Why is measuring the impact of mitigation even harder? What will it take to close the gap between effective risk reduction and informed information that the insurers are using? And and this is where I like to kind of, like Jay said, our goal isn't to provide good information to the insurance companies. Our goal is to stop burning down homes. We just want to do that in a way that we provide useful data that the insurance companies benefit from. So if we can stop burning down so many homes, then we start, we could potentially reduce some of this, this variability across risk in in different markets. So our end state, really through this process that I'm going to get into next, Arizona residents are provided a framework that enables wildfire risk reduction at the parcel or development level and keeps private markets balanced. So I know we're seeing some weird things with insurance in our communities. Mine went up 50% this year. We're still seeing most people who either it goes up or they lose coverage, they can find a Plan B and get coverage, or if it goes up too much, they can find another one that provides a lower costed policy. We're not quite at the point yet where it's, you know, just everybody's losing coverage and nobody can get those policies. But we're heading in that direction. And so how do we keep our market balanced? We don't want to create it, policy swings that are too far in favor of the customer or policy swings are too far in favor of the private sector. This is what these national thought leaders in the space are telling us, maintain a balance. And so the way we're coming to some of these decisions about how we maintain that balance is, is we're looking at proposing a similar effort to the America Burning Report from the 70s and the Wildfire Mitigation and Management Commission Report that was released last year, really looking at trying to create a select group of relevant practitioners that are tasked with creating recommendations. So getting smart people in the room to identify problems and recommendations to go after those. And I just want to read this real quick from the executive summary of the Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission Report. "We need to shift our approach toward proactive actions intended to better prepare for wildfire impacts, reduce those impacts, and build resilience for the future. For too long, we have relied on reactionary systems that has led to growing costs and losses without effectively addressing overall wildland fire hazard and risk. Only through significant investments in proactive planning, mitigation, risk reduction, and the workforce needed to accomplish these tasks can we break the current cycle of increasingly severe wildfire risk, damage, and loss. Importantly, these upfront actions must encompass both the built and natural environment. While significantly, while significant funding has been put towards hazardous fuel reduction work in recent years, there have not been equivalent national scale investments and efforts to reduce risk in the built environment and prepare communities before, during, and after a wildfire. Addressing this gap is essential to a comprehensive approach to wildfire. An example of that, we have been very successful at taking federal funds that have gone to the state that end up in in our pockets to reduce hazardous fuel on private land. Those things move quite easily. We go through almost $100,000 a year of grants from DFFM, Department of Forestry and Fire Management, to reduce hazardous fuels on private lands. The way we go to reduce fire risk with actual structure changes, the, the home hardening, are FEMA brick grants, building resilient infrastructure in communities. And and I, my blood pressure skyrocket's just going to the FEMA website, never mind thinking about the complexity of their grants. And that, that money does not flow as well at all. It's very difficult. I believe the county knows. I think you guys have been working through one, through four years. So this is the issue where we have money flowing for us to go to somebody's yard and talk about cutting down some trees to get risk reduction. We don't have money flowing to go into their yard and talk about how to harden their home in an equal way. So we've, we've been talking to some folks that that already put this framework together for us and we stole it from them with permission. And so this was Chief Frank Fry vault. He was working through the Western Fire Chiefs Association through a grant from the Gordon and Betty Moore Foundation through their Wildland Fire Resiliency Initiative. And and we are plugged in with the Moore Foundation as well, so that's where we're kind of getting access to some of this, this information. But basically, the working group task is intended, these tasks are intended to avoid regulating private markets in ways that cause disruptions and increase uncertainty. So what we, what we really need to do, I know it, it sounds simple where we've got like three tasks, but it's not going to be an easy lift. What are the priority wildfire risk mitigations that matter for structure protection? Again, I'll go to a homeowner, we'll stand in their driveway, we'll give them a list of recommendations that are science-based from these really smart organizations. But in no way are they in an approved framework from the levels of government at Arizona that regulate insurance that are telling me, go tell these people these things. Or if these people do these things, what are the impacts of that? So that's number two. The appropriate systems to basically monitor the implementation of the mitigations that matter. So if we come up with a framework that we tell homeowners, these are the things we all agree you should do, now who's in charge of tracking that they've done these things? Is it the insurance company? Is it the fire department? Is it somebody else? How do we do that? And then also digitally, how do we prove that they've done these things? Because vegetation grows back, people move, we have to have a data set that we can track this stuff from. So we've been establishing some partnerships and we just purchased a new software package to start to digitize our assessments and give people access over time. So if we go to somebody's driveway and we say, hey, you got to move your firewood 30 feet away from your house, how do we know when they've done that? Now they have access to a little account through the software database. They can take a picture and they could say, hey, I moved my firewood.[1783.31] They can take a picture and they could say, hey, I moved my firewood. We can check a box on their account now that said they've reduced their risk, hopefully in some agreed-upon way. And then the third question that we want this, this work group task, "Establish a system of incentives for home and property owners that implement mitigations that matter." So you invest in all this work, then what? Because right now, we're seeing homeowners that have spent significant money cutting trees, hardening their home, creating defensible space, and their rates are still going up or they're losing coverage. So there's no agreed-upon incentive here for the homeowner to do it. And so our hope is we can summarize these recommendations in a report similar to America Burning and the Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission. And, you know, we don't really have a timeline yet for this stuff, but I mean, the answer really is the sooner the better. And so within this, this space, here's the recommended working group representatives. So we've already got Arizona Fire Chiefs and Fire Districts Association on board. Western Fire Chiefs Association, we're also working closely with them. As Jay and Greg mentioned, DIFI, DFFM, Department of Forestry and Fire Management, where the state fire marshal lives under that organization. We've already got buy-in from them. And then what are the right insurance industry representatives as well? And this is just the initial list of representatives that, that a few other groups have been working with that were put together. But the idea is get these people in a room, answer those three questions, write a rapport as quickly as possible, and get it in the hands of the people that are experts in making policy action. And so our next steps, continue engaging with the subject matter experts and proposed working group representatives and their organizations. So our CWPP, you know, you guys have the larger countywide one. The history of the CWPP in the greater Flagstaff area was managed through the Ponderosa Fire Advisory Council. And so that includes, includes Flagstaff Fire Summit Fire, Highlands Fire, Ponderosa, Pinewood, Sedona, and Mormon Lake. So all those communities, that's our footprint for that. And we're going to start expanding our parcel-level data collection software package across that footprint, start getting some lessons learned, really being able to digitize this. Because again, there's no data at the parcel level. How do we start collecting data at the parcel level? We all have these really good tools right here. So we go to somebody's driveway and we start filling out an app rather than a piece of paper. So we're working on that right now. And then early October, we've got a meeting to discuss an MOU. So the Western Fire Chiefs Association, when we started poaching this framework from Frank Freivault back in February and thinking this through, they didn't have funding to include Arizona in their west-wide effort, but they do now. And so October 9th, we've got a meeting. The plan is to start lining out details of an MOU between the Western Fire Chiefs Association and the Arizona Fire Chiefs Association to bring in capacity. So they'll have staff members that can help manage this effort, staff meetings and organize everybody. Because that was one of the big victories of the Wildfire Mitigation and Management Commission. We had staffers to keep us all in line. So if we can get capacity from Western Fire Chiefs to staff this effort, that's going to be a game changer for us. And then December 4th through 6th, the Arizona Wildfire Initiative at NAU and some key partners have organized what they're calling the Arizona Wildland Urban Interface Summit. And so that's down in Tucson. And our plan is then to announce some sort of organized effort, or at least an update on what's coming together in partnership with everybody. So that's kind of our, that's our to-do list where we better have something better than what I just gave you by December because we're going to be given another presentation then. So, you know, really looking at, you know, who's going to solve this? We are going to solve this. We being this community here in this room and our partners. Clear and consistent mitigation alignment strategy. This stuff exists. I don't think the mitigations that matter are going to be that hard of a lift to say these are the science-based mitigations that matter. It's going to be a lot harder to get to agreement on those sort of things and potentially develop different tiers of mitigation strategies. And then again, who's responsible for the monitoring and what are the economic incentives for the homeowners or the developers that are at that parcel level? And then like, like Jay and Greg were getting into, the, the extension of this crisis is kind of unknown at this point. Where if we literally have communities where people can't sell homes or buy homes, property values are dropping. Bond markets are driven by property values. So these have impacts where suddenly school districts, fire districts, cities, counties are going to struggle potentially to, to get low-cost bonding mechanisms put together as well. So that's the scary stuff right now, and it's only going to get scarier until we get some, some efforts and collaboration to start making some, some decisions on how to put these frameworks together. That's my presentation, so available for more questions.
You know we're going to have some. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'll try to be brief here. I know we're under the gun clockwise. Neil, I just wanted to really quickly say, I want to be very clear, just in case there's any confusion or misunderstanding. I'm all for everything that you just presented to us. I'm very enthusiastic about it, as a matter of fact. You know, I do understand forestry. I understand the history of our region and how it used to be thinner and how we got to thicker pine stands throughout here and how that's not healthy and that's not where we should be at. I do have a master's degree in tropical conservation biology and I do get these things. So, you know, everything that you mentioned or because it's good science, these are things we should be doing anyway irrespective of trying to define what insurance companies want. And you have my full throttle enthusiasm and endorsement to move forward on it. So let's get started with that modeling. That looks like amazing modeling from Mahmood, I think, or I apologize if I got that name wrong. But let's start using that and let's let that drive our decision-making process. I'm all in favor of your next steps and let's get going on that in terms of more aggressive, prescriptive, you know, trying to figure out what else we should be doing. Let's, let's tone down the rhetoric on that. Let's get busy with what we know we can do and what we should do anyway. And meanwhile, we need to have a very systematic approach to be lobbying insurance companies at the federal level around coming up with some clarity on all of this for us. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Neil. And thank you for this as well. Really excited by all the good information that's in here. I'm just wondering with this plan and the, the action guide itself, especially with the focus on denser neighborhoods and, and affordable development, is there any plans to develop similar action guides or policies or plans for multifamily and multi-housing developments? Especially as they, they have different needs and different things that people within those can do. I'm one of them. I live in an apartment. But there's so much that is outside of the control of the residents, but there's also things that they can do to, to contribute to some of this as well, as well as the, the owners and management and so forth. So I'm just wondering what thoughts are on, on developing either an action guide like this for multifamily or just broader community-based action?
That's a great question because we're, we're in that space nowadays. Like I said, we, denser communities, wildfire risk. How do, how do we balance these things? And so a couple of thoughts on that. One, as we're looking at denser communities, I'm going to steal the term from Tiffany Antall, Neighbor Woods. And so what we're thinking about is, is in a community, if we literally have homes 10 feet apart, their backyard may only be 20 or 30 feet, how, where is it appropriate to leave the trees that we have if we're fortunate enough to have a developed area that has vegetation on it? So we're looking at using the technology that we've been testing in the forest to literally map every single tree with ground-based LiDAR. We can do that for a neighborhood. We've just never thought of doing that. So for example, a 150-acre parcel that's undeveloped, we go through a map, every single tree, and then a developer comes in and lays down their, their built environment plan of roads and building envelopes. And then we just, you know, those trees come off the map. Then we can start to literally pick and choose what is the right way to leave trees for this community that's going to be built to make sure that they have the right amount of, you know, quality of, of trees. But at the same time, we're not setting them up for future issues around wildfire risk. So that's one thing that we're working on. The second, in the neighbor woods would be, for example, a corner of that community, maybe two acres on the intersection of a road where it curves around. Maybe that's where we can pack in a few more trees without negatively impacting the wildfire risk of the built environment right there. So identifying those areas where we can leave trees and those areas where it's just not the right spot is something that we're trying to design and really be able to customize these where with those data sets, you can just make a tree disappear on a map or you can make the tree come back. And we can say, you know, if we, if we want this kind of, we don't want a tree within five feet of the home. What does that look like for the neighborhood? Well, it may be more trees than we want when it has to go away. So if we have, if we want to leave some, where is the right place to leave them? So we're working on that modeling. The second thing is IBHS has this program that they have, it's called Wildfire Prepared Home. And so it's already in California. This is an example of policy. The state of California has said that they will recognize homeowners who get that qualification from IBHS. That's called Wildfire Prepared Home Base or Plus. Wildfire Prepared Home Base is pretty easy for most people to achieve. Plus is something that you've got to do a lot of work more likely upfront when the home is built because it's a lot more based on the construction materials. And so that's an example of smart policy where if the state of Arizona adopted that and agreed, agreed on those mitigations that matter, IBHS is responsible for monitoring that because you actually have to pay a fee to get that designation. Somebody will go to your house and verify that you've got that designation qualified. That then what's the incentive to the homeowner? So not only do they have that at the home level, they're now expanding that to try to create a wildfire-prepared home neighborhood. So more of like an HOA-scale qualification. And so there, there's groups that are looking at, again, we need the parcel level, we need the neighborhood level. We need all these different levels of data that can integrate together into the decision-making. So they, not only can we accurately say we've reduced risk to the community, but now the insurance companies can price risk better based on knowing this data is out there. So one of the lessons learned from Mahmood's model, Dr. Mahmood basically showed that the likelihood of your home burning down regardless of whether it's a condo or, or a single-family home or, you know, duplex, whatever, are you within 50 feet of another home that's fully on fire? And what happens is one home catches on fire and then the next one, and then the next one. And so with that model, we can find these pinch points where it's like, man, if we invest aggressively in this little corner of the community, it's likely then that that pathway of the fire coming from the natural environment into the built environment could get held in this community and not progress through the neighborhood. So finding those areas to kind of maximize the return on investment and then also looking at those models of fire spread into the community, those two things right there will hopefully help us take that decision-making to a whole nother level on, you know, what, exactly where are we, are we dedicating the limited resources? Does that, that was a long answer. I'm sorry. Okay.
Long but good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I recently ran into a gentleman at the county fair who was asking questions. He was actually has a side hustle doing defensible home preparation. Is there going to be, are we looking at some kind of certification or training for those people that are really looking at protecting their own home? I've got a lot of area, in my district, there's a lot of woods north of Williams, all the way down. So is there something of that nature that we're looking at implementing or something they can look into? And are we trying to reach out to those people that actually have the saws, have the skills to dock down those trees?
Yep.
And help?
So the National Fire Protection Association has a certification called like a Wildland Mitigation Specialist. And it's open to anybody. Anybody can apply for that certification. And there's, there's some books that you read and you got to take a test. And you have to re-up it, I believe, on some sort of regular timescale. So there are, and we do have some of our tree service companies. We've been encouraging them to get that certification. And there's already a few out there that have it. And, and so there's that process right there that, that we're working with. And then at the same time, HOAs in larger neighborhoods can go through the FireWise USA designation. And so the FireWise USA designation is not a guarantee that, you know, a lot of people assume it means your neighborhood's firewise. That's, that's not what it means. It means people in the neighborhood have been mobilized to try to become firewise. And so that FireWise USA designation basically says that there's a handful of people from a couple to a lot that are investing in time, maybe a little bit to a lot, and money, a little bit to a lot, to try to do good things. And the level of impact is variable and that's where these things will start to come into play. So if a FireWise USA community, that means they have an ambassador who's become their firewise point of contact, could then work with the homeowner to try to achieve this IBHS wildfire-prepared home certification. So now we have a standard that they need to meet. That is the, that's a great way we see this stuff coming together. So we have an organized kind of community mobilized effort aligned with a science-based mitigation program. So we're now having people mobilize and doing the right thing.
Excellent. Thank you.
And you are now vice chair? Is that correct? Vice Chair Horseman.
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, I think the working group outcomes that you've developed are great. And I think it is important that all, all the wonderful certifications, all these wonderful things about trying to get neighbors to do this because it is the right thing and it will protect them. But the truth is, it's expensive and without incentives and quite frankly, without building codes which do need to align over a much broader scale and larger scale, I don't know how effective it's really going to be. So that's why I really like your working group outcomes because it kind of takes all of that into consideration. And, you know, I, I hope that the county can join the city in this because I think it is absolutely important for our communities, for our neighborhoods, to be able to, to crack this nuts. So not only for safety, but quite frankly, just financially, so people can afford to live here. Affordable housing has always been a big concern for all of us and we need to try to work on this together. And this has got to be part of it. And I know that's going to make it difficult and just add another, another wrinkle in our whole approach for housing and affordable housing. Also, I think it's really exciting. I never thought about using that LiDAR. I know I've been talking and we've been with Jay and, and others to see what they're doing on forest restoration, where they're using LiDAR and they're, they're actually picking the trees, which is very cool. And to be able to use that in a building envelope to decide what trees stay, what trees go for homeowners is really fabulous, very exciting. So thank you.
Thank you. I think it has some cost savings because right now sometimes a developer will have to go in and kind of do a pre-build thinning of the property. And then once they get to another stage of development and they actually submit their plans, they're going to have to go back in and do again, another round of thinning. And so this way, if we actually do a little more alignment of planning, we may be able, maybe, I can't guarantee, but we may be able to do one entry of thinning.
Additional questions? Is this available in PDF?
Yes.
And is it on the city's website?
Not yet. We're building a new page in our fire department division website to get a couple more pieces of info in there. It'll be up there soon.
Great. Thank you. All right. If there are no additional questions or comments, we will move on to informational items too from chair supervisors, county manager, mayor, council, and city manager. So let's start down here with Councilmember House.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sweet.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Supervisor Vasquez.
And I just put in a plug for Proposition 482, our expenditure limit. I guess that's the big thing that's on our minds and just want to ask for community support on educating folks about Proposition 182, which is about our expenditure limit to raise our base expenditure limit to $7.7 million over the next 20 years. And that should help us maintain and sustain the services that we're providing right now. So, thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Nothing. I'll just comment that this was a very interesting and useful meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Begay.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I think we're all here to say something about our expenditure limit. And that's our main important focus right now as a county. And I just want to say that, you know, it's really important to maintain the services or increase the services to reflect person, things that we're doing for our county. It's been about 40-plus years that the last expenditure limit was passed and so we really need that. And we, we need a lot of help with education to ensure that, you know, that it's going to, it's going to be on the ballot. And we just ask, you know, everyone out there to help us to advocate and also help us educate the community within Coquigny County so that, you know, we can continue to provide the services and move on, you know, with maybe some little minor other projects or further projects that, that have to be dealt with and completed. So I just want to say that. And then also, I just want to say that it's, it's really neat that, you know, we're, we're going and doing, working together as county and city. And there are a lot of other issues that, that I feel personally that should be dealt with by the county and the city together. And today was a very productive day with, you know, with our, with our staff here and, you know, sharing information and just basically being there for one another. And I want to thank the mayor, you know, for taking part in a blessing of a hogon that was built at Flagstaff High School. And she actually went in the hogon and sat there with Councilwoman Sweet and Cat. Yeah, yeah. And so we had three councils, city council, vice mayor. Yeah, so we were all there and it was really nice, you know, to have them partake in the traditional foods that were in there and then also... the traditional foods that were in there and then also witnessing the blessing of the hogon. So that's, you know, diverse. We're talk, we always talk about diversity and it's very important because more and more we are, you know, planning for diverse um, activities and programs and things like that. So I just want to say that we're all in this together no matter what, you know, what we're, what our jobs, our titles are, we're, we're, we're all within Coquenino County and anything, everything that we need to address as a whole is something that we really need to continue to do that. So I thank this council, you know, for affording us that opportunity and also with the, um, with the um, county too. Uh, my colleagues, thank you for being, you know, always readily open and, you know, thinking about the county as a whole. So I just want to say thank you so much.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers, for your hospitality. I always appreciate uh, hearing from you all and your staff and uh, just appreciate these meetings. I think they're very important for us. Um, and thank you. That's it.
Supervisor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to express how I'm just really impressed how the county and the city are working together on all levels, the comprehensive plan, the fire prevention. And uh, I also want to thank you for allowing me, this is my first time up at.
First time up. First time.
So thank you for allowing me up here. Uh, and again, it's, it's amazing to see how our staffs, we, a lot of times we get kind of looking at the entire county and because we know you guys have the city. Um, but it's nice to be here and be involved with the city and see how creative job you guys are doing. So thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
I just want to say thank you for this joint uh, meeting. It's always a pleasure to work closely with our county supervisors and thank you for putting the troublemakers over here. And thanks for the sticker. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for uh, another meeting. I wish I was there, uh, but maybe be there the next time. And this is really important conversation that we're going to continue to have at the national level. So it's really good to learn about the, the approach that the city is taking and always in partnership with our, with our county. We're all working at the national level on these issues as well. So I just want to thank you all for a, a very good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say a special thank you to both the staffs from the county and the city. This is an amazing amount of work that went into putting these presentations together in addition to all the rest of your work that you had to get done. So thank you again very much. Appreciate all of your hard work.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, thank you to all our county supervisors and to all the leadership and staff over at the county. I, I really do like and deeply appreciate all five of my county supervisors. You're a wonderful, wonderful team, uh, and you have wonderful staff behind you. Um, I, I, I wanted to mention how uh, uh, how incredibly moving the uh, the blessing of the hogon was for me. Uh, I, it was, I found it to be a very spiritual experience, a very cleansing experience. And it was so wonderful to be in community with our Navajo students. Um, and I can't wait to repeat that process, hopefully in the near future with our indigenous community center, um, in, uh, as we branch out and include even more of our tribal neighbors in that process. I do have sort of a, a two from or a homework assignment. I'm not sure how we want to tackle this. It certainly does include the county if, if we want it to. Um, I would like a brief update at some point before the election on how we are thinking about election security, how we're thinking about ballot security and what our approach is organizationally going to be on election day, um, for making sure that uh, there's quick rapid response to any, any problems that may arise. I, I hope nothing like that is going to happen in our city or in our county, but I think we have an obligation and a duty to be very well-prepared um, for what are, uh, what I see personally, in my humble opinion, very troubling signs of, of, uh, of, 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 well, I'll just leave the blank there for you. Um, but some sort of report, city manager, maybe about uh, from the police chief of, of how we're thinking about these things uh, in the lead-up to the November election. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. County Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett. Chair Begay, members of the city council and the board of supervisors. Vice Mayor Aslan, really appreciate your comments. Before we get to that, and uh, we'll call Esler Mustar, our elections director, up and talk a bit about that, uh, art, the elections process and what we're doing leading up to the November 5th election. Uh, before we do that, Esler, I just want to note, thank you Supervisor Vasquez for talking about proposition 482. That is the permanent base adjustment to the county's expenditure limitation. We know many of our communities in Coquenino County have experienced with this, including the city of Flagstaff. Please note, it is not a tax, but it allows Coquenino County to expend the funds that we currently uh, collect for services. An example of that would be our road maintenance sales tax. This would allow us to continue to expend those funds on road maintenance services, for example. So thank you so much. Uh, I apologize for not getting on the open call to the public to discuss that, but wanted to note that in this conversation as well. Please note, we do have a public works open house. It's at, uh, on Commerce Drive on Wednesday, the 25th at 4:30. Also, we have an open house at the Flagstaff Aquaplex for all involved. That would include Mountain Line, the city of Flagstaff, on the BB&amp;B renewal conversation, as well as Coquenino County on proposition 482. That is Thursday, the 26th at 5:00 PM at the Aquaplex. We're really looking forward to, to being there and continuing that partnership. We also have a Health and Human Services open house on October 2nd at 5:00 PM. Um, that is next week at our King Street facility. So some open houses from the county there. Uh, now we'll get to Esler, our elections director. Please note that we, the county, are a political subdivision of the state of Arizona and are tasked with running the election. And we can assure you that we will continue to run like we always do. We are the gold standard in Coquenino County. We will run a clean election, a fair election, an accessible election, and Esler's here to talk about the election process and everything involved with that. So thank you very much for having us. Just as it's important for all of you as electeds to be together, it's important for all of us to be together as well. And that's uh, very evident in the two conversations we had today on the two topics, particularly the wildfire discussion. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Mayor, City Council, Esler Mustar, Elections Director for Coquenino County. Thank you for having us here to like very briefly touch on some of the questions that uh, Councilman Vice Mayor Aslan brought up, but also to uh, brief everybody on some of our preparations for the upcoming November general election. Some of you may know this, there are 42 days left to the, to election day, so that's fast approaching. And um, we have some unique um, characteristics and challenges with the, with the upcoming election for the first time in our county. Uh, and, and the city of Flagstaff will have a pretty long ballot, a 19-inch uh, ballot that is uh, pretty busy on both sides. There are about 37 different uh, choices and options for voters to pick on the, on the ballot. And uh, some of the precincts that are in our northern part of the county, in the city of Page, um, have, have two pages of the ballot. So we did bring some props today for everybody to have our sample ballot. These are the unique sample ballots for countywide that show the different races and different permutations of the races throughout Coquenino County. Uh, what we are, um, in anticipation of the, of the work and the, the high turnout that we are expecting for this November general election, um, in the city of Flagstaff, there will be nine vote centers throughout the city that will be uh, a pretty well-staffed and, and, and allow the, allow the public and the voters to, to cast their ballot seamlessly. Uh, one of the things that we, I wanted to also um, point out that uh, in preparation and anticipation for the, uh, for the general election, we have also shared with you a top four things to know for, in order for uh, everybody to participate. The, the first thing starts with the voter registration. The second part is um, uh, the ability to find out what's on the ballot and do the research. And we're directing everybody, uh, including uh, the voters to, to read the full text of the ballot measures, uh, and the county's website. And then taking advantage, which is the third point, taking advantage of the, of the uh, voting options in Arizona and making a plan for voters to vote. Uh, given that the ballot is so long and it's again, it's a historic, by historic measures for our county, uh, we are expecting and, and could likely see um, queuing of, of lines on, on election day. But with preparation and with these talking points and, and pushing out this information about understanding and making a plan to vote 2024, we feel like we will be able to again manage through and, and, and coordinate uh, appropriately. One of the things I wanted to like mention in, in light of the question that came up, we are working very closely with uh, our county attorney's office and the, um, the sheriff's office that coordinates with the, all the law enforcement agencies, uh, not only in the greater Flagstaff area, but with the state, uh, with the state partners like, and, and, and federal uh, government uh, agencies that are involved in security in order to the better uh, plan and, and coordinate all of our efforts for, again, for a seamless um, election day uh, on November, on November 5th. I am more than happy to answer any particular questions or additional questions of one, but one thing I would like to say, uh, because um, I want to say thank you to the city of Flagstaff and, and to, to both the city manager and the mayor for changing the policy, your personnel policy and allowing city staff to volunteer on election. Uh, we had 15 uh, city staff that volunteered and were uh, very much part of our team to delivering um, uh, great service to our voters. I want to say my thanks and, and appreciation. And also the city has made available several of its facilities as vote centers in, in, for, for Coquenino County to, to use on the, on election day. And that is also a great sign and, and a continuation of the, what we were just talking about, a great sign of the partnership that the city and county have together. So with that, I'll, um, yes, I, I can kind of talk and uh, the other side of the make, make a plan uh, to vote has a calendar of the, of the important information. So October 7th is the deadline for voter registration. Early, early ballots um, will be in the mail and, and early voting starts with our recorder's office on, on October 9th. Then um, the last day to request the ballot by mail would be October 4th, uh, October 25th. November 1st is the last day to vote in person at the county recorder's office by 7:00 PM. And then November 5th is election day. And, and voters are more than welcome to and have, and again, in Arizona, several options of participating, either voting by mail, voting in, in person at, at any of those locations or dropping their ballots either at a drop box or on election day at any of the nine vote centers here in Flagstaff or, or, or any of the 38 locations that are set up countywide.
Mayor Daggett, Chair Begay, members of the city council and board, thank you for allowing us a longer update from the county manager, but we felt it was pertinent and important information as, um, as we had, as we are fully engaged in election season. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just clarify, these voting centers, these will be open beginning when? Or are they already open?
So the vote centers are going to be open on election day at uh, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Uh, but they are only open on, on election day. And then the recorder's office has some early uh, voting sites that are uh, um, are at the recorder's office at the 110 Cherry Building, as well as the Flagstaff Mall uh, as a, as another location where voters in Flagstaff can go in and vote in person at both those locations.
Okay. So, so there's the downtown and the Flagstaff Mall if you want to vote early? Or if you misplace your ballot?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, nothing from me other than I really appreciate our county colleagues and I appreciate the great relationship that we have. Thank you for this meeting tonight and we, oh, we're not adjourned yet. This is our open call to the public and I don't see any public commenters.